It is now called to order. And would you kindly take roll call, Ms. Callahan? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, our motion that the agenda be adopted as written.
I'll be a better one.
Loser proposed.
Where are we here? There you go.
We don't want to do the agenda yet, I'm sorry. I would like to note that the closed session following the open meeting will not include a student discipline matter now. However, the agenda will stay the same. Therefore, I move that the school board adopt the agenda as written. Second?
There's been a motion and a second that the school board be adopted as written. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Do we have a motion?
Get the closed session?
Yeah. A motion that the school board convenes a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering personnel matters related to the Liberty High School principal position pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A Subsection 1.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second that the school board convenes a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering personnel matters relating to the Liberty High School principal position pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A Parenthesis 1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. So, we are now in closed session. Reconvene our meeting. Do we have a motion?
What?
Oh, excuse me. That's right.
You've got to do this.
I would like to ask our student, and I don't know your name.
George Mingo.
George Mingo, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, do we have a motion?
Okay. Madam Chair, our motion that the closed meeting be concluded. And the board certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies. And, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second? There's been a motion and a second that the school, that the closed meeting be concluded and that the board certifies to that to the best of each member's knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies. And, two, only such business, public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. And there were no motions out of the closed session. And I'd like to pause a minute for a moment of silence for James J. Stocks, who worked in our Transportation Department for the last seven years and passed away this morning. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, we have a special presentation by a student this evening, and Mr. Fraser, an English teacher at Liberty High School, will introduce his student and tell us about the student and his presentation.
Thank you. Senior George Ingo is Liberty High School's representative in this year's Rotary Speech Contest. This year's theme was Engage Rotary, Change Lives. The speech had to be memorized, no notes, in five to eight minutes in length. George won the first two levels of competition, then did very well in the state tournament in Fredericksburg. He's a great representative of not only Liberty High School but of Falkir County. Not only is he a great public speaker, he's a top-notch student, sings opera, plays multiple instruments, and he's a state tournament wrestler. After he won his first competition, he walked outside where his wrestling coaches were waiting for him to take him to the state tournament sale. A true student athlete. And if that's not enough, next year, George will be attending the United States Military Academy at West Point.
Wow.
Ladies and gentlemen, presenting his award-winning speech, George Ingo. Engage Rotary, Change Lives. It's a phrase meaning to take part in community service and to help those in need. It's also something that both you and I have tried to get at partaking in at least a million times throughout our lifetimes. But, more importantly, why is this something that we as people should be doing? Because the way I see it, there are three major questions that people, their subconscious or their consciously, ask themselves when close to this topic. Number one, why is this my responsibility? I mean, how come people have the gall to walk up to me and tell me that I should be doing something that I just don't feel like doing? Number two, is this even really that big of a problem? I mean, this is the first world, right? This is America. And number three, why do I have to do this? I mean, somebody with more experience and time could and should be doing this. Well, all three of these questions are intrinsically and explicitly selfish, but they don't usually arise in the processes of the mind in this sort of fashion. So, let's just start at the top of responsibility. If you walk down any main street in America, chances are if you ask the first person that you meet if they're a good citizen or not, they will say yes, of course. But I would challenge that very same person to answer the follow-up question of, what have you done in the past week or month to prove that? Now, they will have to think about two things. Number one, what have you done over the past week? Number two, what does it mean by prove my citizenship? See, it's such a widely-used term, but the implied meaning tends to escape most people. Because being a citizen is about being more than just a molecule in a social contract. It's about being part of living, breathing, greater society. And one of that greater society is our nation or our town. It needs our help on a daily basis in order to keep it running fairly and efficiently for all. Now, onto the second question. Is this even really that big of a problem? While we know to some people the United States of America is not necessarily a leader in living conditions, in fact, there are some parts of this particular country that mirror those in third whole nations. The sums of Calcutta, India, and parts of Appalachia are a fair comparison. Now, building off of that, especially with this latest financial downturn, millions of Americans go without food each day. In fact, one out of every six Americans goes without food each day. That's one out of every six citizens in the most lucrative and powerful nation to ever exist on the face of the earth. Furthermore, with the advent of social media, a new thing called cyberbullying has poisoned the web, traumatizing kids across the globe. So, the poor are really that poor, and the hungry are really that hungry, and the bullied kids really do need a mentor. So, of course, being a part of community service is a much-needed thing, because there are many problems facing the many different facets of our society. It's our job as citizens in order to seek them out and to eradicate them. Now, to the third question. Why do I have to do this? I mean, why do I have to do this? I mean, why me? Why can't somebody else do? Well, somebody else already is doing it. And we still have all these problems today and have to present a bounty to you. Now, why is that? It's because more people are asking these questions and are taking the initiative to actually do anything. More people are putting the weight of their burden onto the vaxxers' shoulders than the few. And the few, whether they are the soup kitchen having to turn people in because they're out of food, or the mental health institution having to turn people in because they're out of beds, all overburdened. And selfless cannot pull away the selfish, because it's simply too heavy. So, now that those three questions are cleared, there's still a fourth one. And that is, what can we do? What can you and I do in order to help? And we can do three different things. We could make a long-term commitment to a charity or organization, maybe become a missionary to Haiti and work full-time in a homeless shelter. We could give tangibly by giving money or use pots and pans to a soup kitchen. Or we could give intangibly by giving our time to a major service. But the thing is, people, we don't even have to go that far. Because fortunately, there are more of the fortunate than there are the misfortunate. And it's the little things that can add up. Donating a little money here, spending a little time there. If you're a teacher, maybe checking upon your kids to see if they're all okay, are all things that you and I can do as ordinary American citizens in order to make the lives of the misfortunate better. So, in order to become better citizens of the world of the United States, to be able to go to sleep at night knowing that you and I are helping somebody somewhere out there in need, I encourage each and every one of us in here to engage ourselves in the community. Because it's time to keep me on the good side of a moral code, so the feeling of knowing that you and I are helping somebody somewhere out there in need is worth fulfilling enough. Now, I understand that a lot of you are wondering why I can lecture you guys on community service, because I'm only 18-years-old. But I, over my short existence, have been involved in various different community service projects. But the one that stuck out the most to me is my ego cell project. And what I did was I built a recycling bin that took several different kinds of plastics, and I built that for a local nonprofit called Servant Stafford. And Servant would sell those plastics and use the proceeds to help different families in need. And through my trials, I understand that community service can be arduous at times. But I also understand that the benefits far outweigh any of the drawbacks. So, in conclusion, I'll leave you all with a new vocation to action: to engage Rotary and to change lives. Thank you.
Outstanding, young man. Outstanding.
That's great. That's excellent. Okay. Okay, there's announcements. There will be a Parks and Recreation Co-op Meeting Tuesday, May 20th, at 6:00 PM in Alice Jane Child's Building Basement Conference Room. That's been canceled. Oh, okay. Cancelled. That one has been canceled.
Or rescheduled.
Rescheduled, and we'll let you know. Watch the website. Now, what about these two meetings that are running in conjunction? We just announce them?
Just go ahead and...
Okay. These meetings are in conflict, so they may change, so check out the website before you go. There will be a Mountain Vista Governor's School Governing Board Meeting Thursday, May 22nd, at 8:00 AM in the Warren County School Board Office. And there will also be a Building Committee Meeting Thursday, May 22nd, at 8:30 AM in the School Administration Office. Chairman's Night will be Tuesday, May 27th, at 5:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a special school board meeting and work session Tuesday, May 27th, at 6:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a Board of Supervisors School Board Liaison Committee Meeting Wednesday, May 28th, at 5:00 PM in the Warren Green Second Room Conference Floor, Second Floor Conference Room. And there will be a School Support Council Meeting May 29th, at 7:00 PM at a place to be determined. The Retirement Dinner will be June 2nd, at 5:00 PM at the Stone Ridge Event Center. And there will be a Health Advisory Committee Meeting Wednesday, June 4th, at 8:00 AM in the Central Complex Building Conference Room. Kettle Run High School, these are our favorite events. Kettle Run High School will hold graduation Friday, June 6th, at 6:00 PM at Cougar Stadium. Falkir High School will hold graduation Saturday, June 7th, at 9:00 AM on the Falcon Field. And Liberty High School will hold graduation Sunday, June 8th, at 3:00 PM at the Jiffy Lube Live Amphitheater, rain or shine. And the next school board meeting is Monday, June 9th, in the Falkir High School Cafeteria. And a reception for all the honorees will be held from 6:00 to 6:30, and recognitions will be from 6:30 to 7:00, and the regular school board meeting beginning at 7:00. Okay, and I don't believe there's any response to Citizens Time. And do we have anybody signed up to speak? Did anybody want to speak during Citizens Time? Okay. All right, we're good. Okay, Board Reports. Mr. Gourd?
I'll just tell you that I've been to several plays that have been put on by our schools recently, and if Mr. George is any evidence, the ability to speak and operate within a public space like that is of such importance. And I think a lot of these folks, you know, they learn teamwork, but they also learn to operate on a stage, and I think that's very important. Just kudos to everybody on the productions they've been doing. I also went to a Science and Art Sustainability Fair here on Saturday. Many thanks to Mr. Ranger and Charlene Root for helping set that up. And we got to showcase a number of the science projects that went on. There's some amazing things going on here. Ms. Violet, who's a teacher here at this school, math teacher, also showcased to me and showed me some of the work they're doing on aeronautics and rocketry and the project management skills, the math skills, science skills, et cetera. I mean, truly, we are really heading in a great direction with our STEM education, 21st century learning. The excitement these students showcased this weekend was tremendous. So, hats off to them, and thank you to all those people who put that event on.
Very good.
Okay.
The Building Committee Minutes and also the Joint Personnel and Finance Minutes are embedded in the agenda. And if you all have any questions, either Ms. Grove or I could answer any questions you may have on those two minutes. But I would like to take this moment to thank Dave Graham, Principal up at Marshall Middle School, and his Assistant Principal, Les Bigarve. Last Monday, they hosted a recognition dinner for all the volunteers who do work in the Marshall Middle School. And it was very well-attended. This is the first time that they have attempted to do something like that, and it was quite successful. The food was out of this world. I'm going to volunteer more up there, just so I can go up there and get invited to eat there.
That's great.
But a great dinner and presentation by Marshall Middle School, and Dave Graham and his Assistant Principal, Les Bigarve.
Okay. Ms. Grove?
I'll just say that much of the Building Committee we're going to talk about later tonight.
Here later on.
And the only other thing I want to talk about tonight was just to give a shout-out to the students at Southeastern. First, I wanted to thank them for a necklace, and it just clashed something terrible with this tonight. But it's a beautiful piece of jewelry that they made. So, thank them for that. And anybody that didn't get a chance to read the letter that was in the local paper this past week from one of our Southeastern students, please take the time to read it. It was a wonderful letter concerning some community service projects that they have. And it's well worth your time to look it up.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Grove?
Do you have anything to add?
Nothing.
Did you have anything?
The only thing I had is the Health Advisor Committee Meeting was excellent. The Health Department presented an update on immunizations. And the other thing is April Plummer, our Director of School Nutrition, also presented about competitive foods. And I've asked that maybe at one of our future work sessions that she come present, because it was excellent information about the new laws that are coming into effect in July that regulate competitive foods, which means foods that are not provided by the School Nutrition Department but that are for sale for students to eat. So, we'll have that at one of our future work sessions. It's very, very interesting.
I was listening to some of that information on one of the news radio broadcasts the other day. All the new laws is coming out with health and school nutrition for next year.
Right. Ms. Plummer did mention that in her 20 years, I think she said, of being, working in school nutrition, this is the biggest change she's ever seen.
It's going to be a challenge.
Yeah. So, I want to make sure we were all aware of what it was. Okay. So, where are we now?
Looks like Financial Management Report.
Okay, Financial Management.
Yeah.
Good evening. You have the Financial Management Report in front of you as of March 31st, 75% through the fiscal year. We are on track with prior fiscal years. And I will say, it was another good month of sales for food nutrition, which will help out with our year-end balance. And as an aside, the state did adopt the caboose bill for this current fiscal year. So, that portion of it has passed, although there's not been any movement on the new Bionim budget. Any questions?
No. Any questions? No, thank you. Okay, Ms. Downs?
Good evening. The following is a summary from the Human Resources Department. We're currently gearing up or in full gear for recruitment. We have 33 certified positions, and we currently have 14 classified positions. And as of today, we have 43 retirements on the books.
43.
Any questions this evening?
No. Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a consent agenda motion? I move that the school board approve the following: the minutes of the April 14th school board meeting, and the April 28th special school board meeting and work session, the monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, and the special education annual plan.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second that the school board approve the following: minutes of the April 14th school board meeting, and April 28th special school board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, and special education annual plan. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman, it's with great enthusiasm, I make the following recommendations for administrative positions within Falkir County for the 2014-2015 school year. The first is Patricia Apicella, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. She'll be the new, I'm sorry? Is that close enough? She'll be the new Assistant Principal at Greenville Elementary School. She comes to us from Stafford County.
All right.
There she is. And like so many of our other Assistant Principals here in Falkir, she worked for John Major, the former British Prime Minister, British Prime Minister. Is that correct? And that's for real. That's the truth.
Oh, really?
So, welcome aboard.
Welcome. That's great.
It's with great enthusiasm that I recommend this individual for the Principalship of Liberty High School. This individual was one of many outstanding applicants for the position, but his enthusiasm, vision for student success, and understanding the steps necessary to move Liberty High School to the next level enabled Sam Cox to rise to the top. So, I recommend Sam Cox as Principal of Liberty High School.
Well, I just would like to really welcome you both to an outstanding team, and more outstanding with the two of you added to it, I'm sure. Anybody else have any discussion? Okay. After that, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay. Welcome, welcome. Carl Perkins Grant.
Thank you. See you, George. Oh, my gosh. Please. I'm so proud.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Fry. I'm the Career and Technical Education Supervisor, and I'm here tonight to present you the 2014-15 Carl Perkins Proposed Budget. As in the past, we propose that some of this funding cover professional development for career and technical education teachers. It will go to fund our Career Pathways Fair that we offer in February to our county eighth graders to assist career and technical education students moving to state and national competition and assist with their expenses, to provide one career coach at one of our high schools. And then, this year, we would like to propose that the remaining money be put towards software, instructional and diagnostic software for our auto-technology program, to purchase equipment and fixtures, to upgrade a cosmetology lab, and some of our culinary arts facilities. This budget has been approved by the CTE Advisory Council, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? No, you answered all of mine.
Okay.
That's great. That's great. We're just really proud of our CTE Department. It's just wonderful.
Well, thank you. I am too. Our teachers are working really hard, and I just want to support them with the most up-to-date and current equipment and facilities that we can for our students.
What year of our Career Pathways Fair will this be? How many years?
We've done it for three years. We've completed three years. This will be the fourth year coming up.
I just heard some students who are rising into high school say that that changed their mind about some other direction they were going in.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that.
So, that it was really worthwhile for them.
I'm glad to hear that.
And probably saved them quite a bit of time muddling through school to figure out some things, so congratulations on that.
Well, thank you. I'm really glad. It makes me happy to hear that it helps students make the right decisions.
That's an excellent event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, Ms. Fry would like this to be moved to action, but I do, there are some other ones to be moved to action. It's a sub-motion.
So, yeah, we'll do that all together. Okay.
And my next topic is the textbook adoption for auto-technology. This adoption includes one title. It will be used for all levels of automotive technology. It complements our online instructional software. It is NATEF-approved, and it meets the requirements of our certification. This adoption with shipping comes to just under $6,500. And I would be happy to answer any questions on that. They are ordered in classroom sets, so they would be housed, you'd see the workbooks, they would be housed inside the classroom.
No. Sounds great. Any questions?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're moving...
Great. That'd be great. Okay, Falkir High School Loop Parking Lot Resurfacing.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring before you two information items for your consideration and approval to award contracts. The first is for the resurfacing of the gymnasium bus loop parking lot here at Falkir High School to request your approval to award a contract to Resurface Incorporated in the amount of $124,932.65. This project is included in the FY14 Cash Capital Improvement Plan and will complete the parking lot resurfacing here at Falkir High School. We did solicit bids from both of what we call our open-end providers, our routine contractors, I'll call them, that do a lot of our recurring maintenance work, and Resurface Inc. was the low bidder. The scope of work for this parking lot resurface will mirror exactly what we did in the front student parking lot last year. So, we ended up with, you know, the same product we have out front. Work would begin as soon as school is out. We're coordinating with school administrators here now, and hopefully would have it completed by before early August. I would imagine four to six weeks, but without a firm construction schedule in my hand, I would say we'll be out of here by the first of August. So, again, for your consideration and approval to award a contract to Resurface Incorporated. The second one is the Liberty High School Video Surveillance System Upgrade. Some of you may know that school is woefully behind with our current camera system coverage. The system is outdated. You might recall, we did apply for a grant last year through the state, received grants for Taylor &amp; Warrenton, and did not receive a grant for Liberty. We were able to identify some year-end funds that are in this year's capital plan, but after further consideration, we have decided to move forward with a complete overhaul of that video surveillance system. We used existing cameras with our other conversions. And with Liberty, like Taylor &amp; Warrenton, we all brand-new cameras, all digital. So, we do request your approval to award a contract to Corbett Technology Solutions in the amount of $121,030. We're looking at starting the work the week after school is out and completing by one August. Again, no firm construction schedule. Any questions?
Greg, remind us, how many cameras does Liberty have now?
30.
And how many does Kettle Run?
Kettle Run has 132. Liberty will have, with the newer technology, Liberty will have 64 cameras. But again, the technology has changed so rapidly, it'll have half the cameras and the same coverage that Kettle Run has.
Oh, wow.
So, it's a big difference.
Madam Chair, I would like to add that both of these items were discussed quite extensively in the Building Committee Meeting, and it comes to the board tonight with the Building Committee's approval to move forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bergwin, Dr. Bergwin. Education of Migratory Children Certification.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Jack, I'm here this evening to ask that the school board approve the Title I, Part C, Education of Migratory Children Regional Program Agreement. If it seems like this has come up quickly, because you just approved it in October, it has come up quickly. We were off-cycle because of the Virginia waivers for the federal grants that happened two years ago. We're getting back on cycle, and the grant is due to the state July 1st. So, in order to work through this agreement with the Virginia Migratory Education Act, we need to move this to action item tonight. We had occasion recently to use the services of the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Ed Program when a student who was served in the Albemarle region transferred into Falkir County Public Schools. Mrs. Laura Hoover and I called the Valley Consortium, and they worked through this with us and helped us determine that the parents had moved here as a result of a new job that and helped us determine that the parents had moved here as a result of a new job that was not qualified under the Migratory Ed Act. So, it's just good to know that we have that resource available to us and I would urge you to move it to action tonight and sign it so that we can have it submitted to them by the end of the month. Any questions?
No. I didn't have any, any other questions? Okay, thank you, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move, that's a School Board move, information items number 14A, 14C, 14D and 14E to action items, oh my goodness, 15C, 15D, 15E and 15F for consideration of approval this evening and to renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the School Board move information items number 14A, C, D and E to action items number 15C, D, E and F for consideration and approval this evening and renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no, the ayes have it. Okay, Dr. Jack, Middle School Sports.
All right. Briefly, wanted to talk and provide you with an update relative to middle school sports and where we are, but I'm going to give you a couple more seconds to watch the animation. Very nice. Took me, it took me a long time to, just kidding, I didn't do that. Just briefly, when we began the conversation about potentially bringing back middle school sports, the idea initially was to bring back, bring back parts. So, what we asked from the middle school principals was to get together with Mr. Finn, you know, decide which of the sports they felt most strongly about bringing back. Football at that time and till now was never a real strong consideration because there's been a lot of questions about football. But these are the sports and the teams that the middle school principals and working with Mr. Finn decided that would be brought back, assuming the funding was available to bring back middle school sports. And of course, the other non-negotiable within that proposal was that intramurals would continue. We wouldn't sacrifice interscholastic for intramural, we would do both. Coordination, this program is going to require a middle school activities coordinator. This wouldn't be a full-time position, it would be a stipend position. And this individual would be responsible for coordinating with each of the five middle schools onsite athletic directors, activities directors, excuse me, who are also stipend positions, not full-time positions. They would be teachers who would be taking this on as an added responsibility. So, we have some division-wide coordination, which we'll be advertising very soon, again, as a stipend position. And he'll have, he or she will have the task of doing a lot of work right away relative to standardizing equipment, ordering uniforms, arranging transportation, doing all those important things. As far as the school's responsibilities, the activities directors at each of the schools, again, would be paid a stipend and they would be, of course, more responsible for the day-to-day operations and goings-on with sports and activities within the schools and they would work closely with the division coordinator. And those are the sorts of things that they would be responsible for, collecting student fees, also working with transportation to secure bus trips, hiring and paying coaches or making sure that they are paid, hiring officials, et cetera, et cetera. And because of, there's going to be a significant startup cost because most of, most if not all the equipment from the previous incarnation of middle school sports are gone. So, there's a pretty significant startup fee relative to equipment and uniforms. Funding, and again, this is something we've talked about. The funding for middle school sports didn't make in the 2014-2015 approved budget. However, Marcy sharpened her pencils, her pencil and was able to identify savings from this year and rather than carry that money over into next fiscal year, we thought it would be prudent to just go ahead and give each of the middle schools money to, as both startup money and money needed to run their athletic programs at each of their schools, to give that money now so they can start that whole process, particularly related to equipment and uniforms. Those kinds of things need to be ordered now or very soon. So, that money will go into their activity funds. They will be responsible for paying bills on equipment, uniforms, et cetera, et cetera, officials and whatnot. And the hope, of course, is that perhaps in the next fiscal year, that that money becomes local money, hopefully, and then it would go back to division-level money rather than activity fund money in each of the schools. Okay? And I just mentioned this, I'm jumping ahead. But another good animation here with the batter hitting the FCPS. Did they already do it, Marcy? Wait a minute. No, I'm not going to do it, sorry. The annual cost yearly, there it is. The annual cost from this, from this next school year forward should be significantly less because of the whole startup pieces I mentioned. The student fees, what we'll do is that money will be taken and just will, you know, sort of supplant money that's being spent now. We'll take that, collect that money from the schools and we'll use it for the following year. So, it's sort of a perpetual way to fund at least part of the middle school athletics program. And that's it? Any questions about middle school sports? All right, Marcy, student fees.
Per School Board policy, anytime there's a change in fees, we bring it forward to you. What I've attached is the regulations that show all our fees and then I actually show the line-in, line-out that shows that the only difference from last year or current year fees to the proposed fees is to add the middle school fee. And that would come back to the School Board and we hope to use that to help fund the next year. Any questions? Thank you.
Nope. Yes. We're good. That's okay. Okay, Schools Quality Survey Results.
Okay, just a little bit of background about the school quality survey, survey we put out earlier in the school year and the results. The goal here with surveying and providing the survey to students, teachers, staff and parents is, at this point, is just to use it as a starting point for developing trend data so that in each subsequent year, we can sort of figure out what we're doing well and why we need to improve. It's not a, I mean, perhaps some of the misunderstanding is it's the results of these surveys are going to bring around, bring about huge change and we're going to just start to, you know, just making wild changes. That's not the goal at all. The goal was to collect data and face harsh realities when we need to and recognize the things that we're doing well and try to improve on those things even more. That's the goal. And what we did with each school, we provided each principal with their, with their data and what Karen did, Parkinson, was put together this presentation relative to the entire school division to show how we're doing as a school division. And this is, by the way, this is a survey instrument that we borrowed from the Hawaii Department of Education. I know that sounds kind of odd, but it's a very, very good tool and lots of states utilize it and all they ask for is that we recognize them as the contributor of the survey and they're fine with us using it. And it's not, it is not, it's by no means a scientific foolproof, waterproof instrument. It's not. It is just a way to get feedback and learn more about what you're doing well and where you need to improve. We provided it online for all stakeholders. We had 1,500 parents participate, which I thought was pretty good, 366 teachers, 1,441 students, high school-age students, and they were a captive audience. What we asked principals to do was take a portion of their student body and require them to take the survey. So, they may have been a little angry when they took the survey, depending on what they were doing otherwise. So, you got to consider that when you read some of their results. Middle school students was 693. Again, we asked them to, you know, take captive audience students and have them complete the surveys in labs at the middle schools. Elementary was 665 students, instructional support staff, instructional support staff, 67. Administration office staff, 56 and other 25.
Can I ask, what exactly is administration office staff? Are those principals or who is that? Or people that else change titles?
Exactly, it's administrators and then office staff, like secretaries, for example.
At, only at the schools or does it include?
No, it was.
Everybody?
It was everybody.
Oh, okay.
So, I felt for a first, for a first go-around at this and a first attempt at this, I thought we had, we had a pretty good turnout. We probably, I would say the next, the next time we do this, we potentially could double that number. I mean, we can, we can, once people know it's there and that we're using it, I think people are more apt to participate in it. All right, parents. Again, parents, what we're seeing, we seem to be doing well in terms of the results, communication, school to parents, teacher to parent, parent to child, seem to be doing well with the cleanliness and the care of our schools and the care for our students. I think overwhelmingly, our students, our parents feel like their students are safe in our schools. Our schools are safe, well-maintained, et cetera. They feel good about the communication. Weaknesses, few opportunities to participate in decisions. Not enough teacher uses of blackboard, which we're working on feverishly and I think we're getting better, I would say almost at a daily rate. But that's such a new thing that, again, you have to kind of look at that one within context. It's new, we're getting better. We're not, we don't expect full implementation until next fall anyway, but we're, we're going to keep working on it. Lack of friendliness toward and acknowledgement of visitors. I think sometimes that's often is a result of, front offices are very busy, very busy places. And homework, too much or too little, there was a dividing line that we either give too much homework or not enough homework. So, with parents, there are two pretty distinct sets of data points there where we can, we can see where we're doing something well, but also where we need to improve significantly. Teachers, strengths, curriculum, instructional strategies. I think our teachers feel very good about what they're providing in terms of strategies. They feel very good about the way that they are able to help students and they feel as though they treat students with respect and they feel as though they welcome parents and parents feel welcome as a result. Weaknesses, again, this is about voice, it's sort of similar to the first weakness under the parent piece. It's just having that voice, few opportunities to help craft schools' academic and financial plan. And I, I think I agree with that one. I think there's, we can provide more of a voice to staff as far as, for example, during budget time and what their thoughts and feelings and what they, what they value and what they don't value. Don't feel involved necessarily in the school improvement process and better communication needed within the building. That seemed to be the one piece, if you look at all the subgroups, the one piece that we didn't do well with communication, as well with communication was within buildings. So, again, that's something that we'll work on. High school students, probably the most startling and I meet with, as you know, I meet with a high school group and I shared these results with them at the last, at the last advisory meeting. Their strengths, what they see as strengths, understanding the importance of contributing when working with others, collaboration in other words, using technology responsibly. And again, I have to agree with them, I do, and in talking with them, the implementation of BYOD has been good. I mean, we've had our bumps in the road for sure, but I think our kids got the message about the need to be responsible. I think they took that message to heart and I think the principals would, would agree that it's been, they've been responsible. And also a strength that someone at home is aware of what's going on in school, that they're talking, in other words, they're talking to their parents about what's going on in school and their parents are talking to the students. Weaknesses, this one, you know, this is a facing a harsh reality piece, there's no use in hiding it. Do not enjoy coming to school, that was 41%. Teachers don't make learning interesting through multiple activities and they don't feel listened to. I would just say this about, and this is something I talk to the high school students about at length because those three things are troubling to me. I asked them, I said, my interpretation of when a student says, "I don't enjoy coming to school", I interpret that as I am often bored in school. And students seem to agree with that characterization. You're bored in school. I don't see that 41% of our kids just want to shun school. I think they see it as sometimes school's boring and we can improve that, we can make that a better situation for them. Middle school students, very similar to the high school responses. The strengths were the same. About the same percentage indicated that they don't enjoy coming to school, so we need to improve that. One thing that was surprising to many of us was the number of kids who said that no one in their family attends school events and meetings and I think that is a communications thing. I think often we can improve that by providing more communication to home as far as what actually is going on in our schools. And they also, middle school students were concerned about schools not, not being able to handling bad student behavior and would like to see more discipline related to bullying, which is something I'll be talking to you later on this summer about is additional strengthening our bullying policy, which is something we've talked about in senior staff and Mr. Finn and I have talked about at length. Elementary students, strengths and weaknesses, no support and help when working with others. Someone in the family, again, is aware of what's going on in school, what they're doing in school and the teachers care about them and want to help them, that's encouraging. But they also, again, number one weakness is they don't enjoy coming to school, they don't feel safe from bullying and no one in the family attends school events and meetings. I think the percentage of students who indicated at the elementary level that they felt they were concerned significantly about bullying was about 20% and that's just too high. So, there's no use in pretending that bullying isn't something that we need to deal with. We're like every other school division in the country. We have, we have to address that issue and we have to do a better job with it. Instructional support staff, they care and respect for students. They give help to students when they need it and they offer quality, standards-based education. But again, the weaknesses piece was something that's reflective in some other adult subgroups, not given an opportunity to help plan and make decisions about matters that affect their area of responsibility. It's again, having voice and how do we give those folks voice within their buildings, within their departments? Admin, office and others, same as instructional staff. Our schools promote learning for all. Staff at our school treat each other with respect, that's encouraging. And weaknesses, cannot freely express opinions, concerns to administrators. Staff cannot freely express concerns to office staff. And these are the percentages and these, I think, are some excellent statistics and some very positive statistics. Satisfied with the quality of our school. You can see that, you know, we're upwards of 93% of the subgroups that indicated that they're satisfied with the school division. The lowest was high, excuse me, middle school students, but you can see the rest of those statistics are very good.
Very good.
And just in closing, again, you know, I'm a, I'm a good-to-great person, you've heard me talk about that and I mention it often, mention it often to staff and you've got to, step one, face the harsh realities, where are we going to improve? But again, I want to make sure that everyone understands, particularly board members, this is a very non-scientific process, but still, it's good data and it's a good way to help us move forward.
And you do this annually, is this an annual?
In my last school division and as principal, I did it every two years, so I haven't really decided yet. It may be something I do every year, especially to start off with so we can get some trend data more quickly. But previously, I did it, I did it every two years.
Well, it's great data.
Any other questions?
Out of curiosity, what percentage of students said that they, what did we, how many do we have that didn't like coming to school?
Forty-one.
Yeah, so what did you find previously?
Oh, wow, that's a good question. Ouch, that's a hard question. I don't remember, but I think probably right in that neighborhood. I just, students, you know, never discount what students say or their opinions that they offer, but I really believe, in my experience of 25 years, they associate boredom with just not liking something. Students like coming to school to see their friends. They have some classes that they really like because they're really interested in robotics or engineering or whatever it is. And they love the after-school activities, but in some classes they're bored, that's, that's never changed. We can improve there, we must improve there, but I think it's important, there's, almost needs to be an asterisk there which I think that's more of an engagement thing than it is, I just, you know, I'm repelled by school, I don't think that's it at all.
Maybe the question should be, not do you like, but are you bored?
Or are you engaged?
Are you engaged?
That's good, good suggestion. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Excellent, excellent data. Okay. Excellent. Excellent data. Okay, science textbook adoption.
All right, I'll start and then we'll just move down the line. I move that the school board approved the science program textbook adoption as presented at the April 28, 2014 school board meeting.
Second. There's been a motion and a second that the school board approved the science program textbook adoption as presented at the April 28, 2014 school board meeting. Any discussion? I just would like to, again, thank Pam Pulver for an outstanding job in going through a bunch of schedules with interruptions with snow days and rain days and all these days. And it was a, a very massive adoption. So, thank you, Ms. Pulver. That was excellent.
She pulled it off.
She pulled it off. It was excellent. Okay, no more discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it.
Okay, on B, we haven't discussed that yet. Do you want to have some sort of discussion on it or?
Um, yeah. Well, why don't we make a motion and then we can discuss it after that?
All right. I move that the school board approved the resolution that commemorates the 60th anniversary of the historic U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board approved the resolution commemorating the 60th anniversary of the historic U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus the Board of Education. Any discussion? Has everyone in this room read this resolution? Because if we haven't, I would like to read it and I know that's going to take time, but I think this is a very well-written, important resolution that commemorates a very incredible movement in our history. And this is whereas the public, whereas public education is essential to an informed citizenry, the foundation of our democratic society, and whereas access to public education is the gateway to opportunity our nation's promise to all, and whereas a public education for every citizen regardless of race, religious, religion, ethnic background, or economic circumstance is a fundamental civil right under our form of government. And whereas, on May 17, 1954, in a historic, unanimous decision, United States Supreme Court in Brown versus Board of Education ruled that public education is subject to the equal protection provisions of the United States Constitution. And whereas, the court based its decision in a major part on the premise that to separate children according to their race was unfair, diminishing their hopes and their future aspirations. And whereas, the court's pronouncement in Brown versus Board of Education validated the struggle and remarkable actions of countless Americans who challenged the destructive effects of segregation in our society through peaceful, lawful means. And whereas, the court's decision has had a profound, significant, and beneficial impact on all aspects of American life in the United States. And whereas, many areas of our nation are still struggling with how to remove the vestiges of segregation in education. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Faukeer County School Board on this 12th day of May in historic recognition that May 17, 2014 makes the 60th anniversary of the landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to further a nationwide appreciation for the advancement of democratic principles through our system of law and justice using the unanimous 1954 Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education as a touchstone. And be it further resolved to inspire all our nation's children regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, disability, or economic status to appreciate the value of public education and public service as a means to further the objectives of democracy, justice, and equality. And be it further resolved that the Faukeer County School Board encourages direct student participation through essays, creative arts, lectures, research and writing, community projects, and other activities to foster personal commitment to democracy. And be it further resolved that the contributions of civil rights leaders and volunteers, parents, and students be recognized, for it is only through their courage, conviction, and sacrifice that Brown versus Board of Education became a reality. Be it further resolved that on the, on the date of May 17, our nation's public schools are encouraged to mark this anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education with appropriate ceremony and remembrance. Thank you. That is a, one of the best ones I've ever read. I think it's great. Okay, so, did we vote on it?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't. Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have All right, I'm lost. Hold on, I got, can I?
15C coming up.
Yes. Go ahead, do.
Okay, this is for the Faukeer High School Gym and Bus Loop Parking Lot Resurfacing Contract Award. I motion that the school board approve the contract award to resurface Incorporated in the amount of $124,932.65 to perform the resurfacing of the gymnasium and bus loop parking lots here at Faukeer High School.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board approved the contract award to resurface Inc. in the amount of $124,932.65 to perform the resurfacing of the gymnasium and bus loop parking lots at Faukeer High School. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, the video surveillance system?
I motion that the school board approve the contract award to Corbett Technology Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $121,030 to replace the video surveillance system at Liberty High School.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board approved the contract award to Corbett Technology Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $121,030 to replace the video surveillance system at Liberty High School. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Education of migratory children certification?
I move that the school board approve the Title I, Part C, Education of Migratory Children Regional Program Agreement.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board approve the Title I, Part C, Education of Migratory Children Regional Program Agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it.
Carl Perkins Grant.
I move that the school board approve the Carl Perkins Grant application for school year 2014 through 2015.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board approve the Carl Perkins Grant application for school year 2014-15. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, closed session.
I move that the school board convenes a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing and considering personnel matters related to the evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A subdivision 1.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board convenes a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering personnel matters related to the evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, what'd you say? Subsection 1. Anyway, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. All right, closed session.